I want to go ahead and call this meeting of the Camrio Library Board to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Kildee?
Here.
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Morgan?
Here.
President Protim Craven?
Here.
President Tremblay?
Here.
Madam Mayor, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Certainly. Please rise. And with your right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening?
No amendments to the agenda, Mr. President.
All right, and do we have any public comments? There being none, we'll move on to consent calendar. We have two items, one are the minutes, and the second is the activity report. Move the approval of the minutes.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded for approval of the consent calendar. Any discussion? Could you vote, please?
That passes unanimously.
That passes on a five-zero vote. Thank you. Let's see, apparently, no departmental items this evening?
No, Mr. President.
No items from legal counsel?
No items.
All right, comments from staff?
No comments.
Any comments from the trustees?
I just want to say that my little guy and I have been enjoying pause for reading all summer, as well as the magic show on Wacky Weddinsty.
Excellent. That's good news.
Just one, since we're saying that, my grandson is here from Reno, and he reads all the time. I'm talking about, he got a certificate from Trump, President Trump, for big straight A's in his class and all that. Well, he loves going to our library, so...
Any, these are all great comments, any other comments? All right, that concludes, we're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 5:02 PM.
Did I miss a motion to adjourn? No, I'm just laughing because the meetings are so short.
I can make them longer.
I'd like to call the regular sanitary, excuse me, the Camrio Sanitary District meeting to order for June 12th, and let the record reflect that all the directors are present. Are there any amendments to this agenda?
No amendments, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll get down to the public comment. Any public comment here? All right, let's get down to item three, it's a consent calendar, which is amendments.
Move the approval.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any further discussion hearing, none, please vote. That passes unanimously. None of any departmentalized. Closed session, do we want to take that now, or do you want to wait until later in our regular agenda, Counselor?
Well, my thought is that I could just make the announcement now, and then we'll deal with it when we have time, either at the six o'clock session or an hour later.
Okay.
So this one closed session item is a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 56.9D2. The number of cases is one.
Any comments from the staff?
No comments.
Is there any comments from board members? Okay, so Counselor, will be any, after the closed session, will be any announcements?
We're not expecting any, but rather than to adjourn, to adjourn your meeting, my recommendation is that you recess.
Okay, with that, we stand in recess.
I'll call the meeting of the Camrio City Council to order, and let the record reflect that all council members are present. Do we have any amendments to this agenda?
No amendments to the agenda, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Anything from council? If not, we will move on to the consent calendar.
Move the approval of consent calendar.
I'll second the motion.
That's the smallest consent calendar I've seen us have.
Just a note, Madam Mayor, I need to recuse myself from item B under disbursements for the reason that one or more clients of my firm are payees listed under that warrants list.
Okay, so the record will reflect that as we vote, Mr. Tremblay will be abstaining from item B. Any comments or questions on this? If not, please vote. And that does pass unanimously with the one exception noted. Mr. Morgan's going to have a party down there.
Everybody here can turn this thing off.
Okay, we move on to the department items, and the first one being finance, and this is fiscal year 2017-18, community event funding agreement with Camrio Fiesta Association. Staff report, please.
Mayor, members of the city council, you have before you tonight a funding agreement, a community event funding agreement for, with the Camrio Fiesta Association. As you know, in March of this year, the city council adopted Policy 1.15, Guidelines for City Support of Community Events. Thereafter, city council considered applications for funding of events for inclusion in the 17-18 fiscal year budget. That budget was adopted on June 28th, based on recommendations from the council. Funding was provided to several community event organizations. Tonight, you have the first of these agreements that will be coming forward. In this case, this is for the Camrio Fiesta Association, for the annual Fiesta event, the Camrio Fiesta and Street Fair. This event is an event that provides various entertainment activities to the community, brings an approximate 35,000 people to the community to enjoy the festivities. The event this year is beginning tomorrow on the 13th through Sunday, and in this case, the event and the agreement before you only includes community support, which is in-kind services provided through the city of Camrio and the Sheriff's Department via the contract with the city. The amount of the agreement is for in-kind services of $22,100, and with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
I have a question from the city attorney. I cannot vote on this, is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
That's right.
You probably should make a statement why you're abstaining from participating.
I'm a board member of the Camrio Fiesta Association.
Great. With that, we move on to questions. Does anyone have any questions? Nothing down there? I do. Excuse me, Mr. Morgan?
Nothing, nothing, nothing.
Well, you're not supposed to make comments, so... I have a question on the, a couple of things. One is under the indemnification. These organizations already have received, and I say they, because this will be one of many, have already received a special event permit, and the events have always been held under those requirements. And I meant to go look at one, and I apologize that I didn't, but I don't remember in the indemnification section on the special event permit, that it talked about the fact that we would have legal counsel reasonably acceptable to the city. Is that wording in the special event permit? And again, I apologize for not going to look. And the reason I question it is, is in most cases, the insurance company would be the one who would retain the attorney to, in order to, you know, take care of whatever happened. So I don't know if this is a new requirement that was added, and I just have a little bit of a problem saying that, because if your insurance company that's covering, that has your insurance on you, isn't agreeable to it, then we might find ourselves in a mess. And if indeed you're going to require this of us, then I would think the insurance company would have to be notified of that. So can somebody help me with that?
I don't know the exact language in the special event permit at this time. I don't know in regards to the language in the agreement whether or not that's new language, that's only included in agreements, or if that's consistent with our special event permit language.
Well, this is a whole new agreement. We haven't had this before, correct?
That's right, and the purpose of the indemnification clause is so that if there is actions by the organization that causes injury or damages, that the organization would then hold the city harmless and provide a defense. And when it says with legal counsel reasonably acceptable to the city, that is a common language, and sure Mr. Tremblay could confirm, and that that's the purpose of this clause. I don't recall from memory...
See, my problem is, is what it, going back to the special event permit, which is what most of the organizations have been operating under, and if you've added this new piece to it, would your insurance company have to know and agree to the fact that the city has to agree to the attorney that would represent them?
I don't believe the insurance company would have to know that, but I...
But then would you leave the organization high and dry if the insurance company said, "Sorry, this is our attorney," and you said, "Sorry, it doesn't work for me," and then you've got this organization out there in Never Never Land? I will tell you that I wouldn't sign this myself unless we talk about that, just, and I'm not saying you don't have the indemnification, obviously you do, but the part that's bothering me with legal counsel reasonably acceptable to the city, that's the piece that's bothering me. And I apologize, I meant to go look up the special event permit.
What I would suggest, Madam Mayor, is that you take us through the rest of your questions, and then we table this item till later on in the evening, Mr. Vaca can pull the special event permit for this organization and the others. We can compare the language in a recent, you know, during the intervening time...
That's correct.
And come back and have that question answered for you.
And I appreciate that, I'm looking out for all of them, because it kind of bothered me when I read that. And the other question I have in this one is, it's, this includes special event overtime. Who's overtime?
That's a good clarification question. That's overtime for city personnel and for Sheriff's Department.
And Sheriff's Department, so we probably should include that.
We can make that change.
And insurance, who's? And the purpose of this, I'm assuming, is, maybe you just need to tell me the difference between having this and having the special event permit, and this, I'm assuming, just lays out the dollar amount that you're...
Yeah, it lays out the city's obligations and the organization's responsibilities for the use of this money. What's different about this agreement, for example, versus, you know, the Camrio Arts Council or the others, is that we are, for example, for the Camrio Arts Council or for SciArt, you know, we're providing actual cash assistance, and there would be some accounting of the use of that money, and you will see that in those agreements. So it's deeper in terms of the responsibility of the organization. In this case, since Fiesta is not touching any money, they don't have any accounting responsibilities for the use of this support, because it's in-kind from the city.
So the other thing that kind of caught my eye is up in the recitals, you talk about what the organization does. It seems to me that that's more the criteria under what we're giving them money, not the fact of making a statement. In other words, the, we're going to give an organization, and I'm picking on this one just because it's the first one I've seen, but we're giving the organization some kind of support to put on this event. The city's obligation is that we're providing that money or service.
Yeah, in-kind service.
The organization's responsibility is basically to do what's up in your recital. That's their responsibility.
Correct.
And so is that what that recital means, as you're making a statement that that's the obligation of the organization?
No, not necessarily the obligation, it's reciting what the money is going to be used for, in terms of the event and why we're providing this funding or this in-kind support.
Oh, it's justification for spending the money?
Correct.
So this really doesn't get down to what the organization is required to do?
No, in this, in this case, you know, the obligation for the organization is for indemnification, you know, any noticing, you know, that needs to go back and forth. If there's a, if there's a legal dispute under which law, it's covered, and because this is only in-kind support, they don't have any accounting obligations or responsibilities.
But they have an obligation to put on an event.
Right, and that's assumed. I mean, we've already been through a community...
Accountants assume things? Accountants don't assume things, so...
Madam Mayor, may I make just an observation?
The recitals detail, the factual recitals, of what the responsibility of the association is. Those recitals are specifically incorporated into the agreement, at the bottom of page two of the agreement. So the way I would read it is to say, I would look, it's on large page four, paragraph 11, and so the way that I would interpret it is to say, okay, those, this is the understanding about what the association is supposed to do. Anyway, I just wanted to indicate to you that that's the way I read it.
That's the way you read it, that that's what the organization is supposed to provide in exchange for?
That's how I took it, and there's your consideration going back and forth.
The recital language, just for clarification, is largely drawn from the organization's application, and we've done that with all the other agreements that will be coming forward.
So it's coming from the funding application versus the special event permit? Okay, just trying to figure all this out with our first one. Did I hear anything down here, Mrs. Craven?
I was just going to say, it seems to me that saying they now have an obligation to put it on, for, if we were giving them money, they would. If they didn't put it on, they wouldn't receive any in-kind services.
That's probably true with the...
With the in-kind services. So I don't see this as saying you now have an obligation, if something happened, it could not be followed through, not come on. I understand that it's two days from now, or tomorrow, or whatever it is, and it's going to happen, but...
Because it's not cash?
Theoretically, they just wouldn't get it if they didn't have it. We wouldn't go after them and say, "You had an obligation because you signed this."
I guess what caught my attention was the last sentence that says, "This event provides the community with an environment that is safe, clean, and entertaining for all ages." That's the commitment that I think they're making, is that they're going to put on a good event that is indeed safe and clean. So as long as you're telling me that recital is basically, so it's not just that they're going to have a Fiesta, but they're going to do it, in this case, in certain ways. They're going to offer food, they're going to have retail vendors, et cetera. So as long as the recital is what they're going to do, I'm okay with that. Okay, okay. So I just have the question on that language, then, on the legal counsel reasonably acceptable. Make sure it matches.
Yeah, and if we could, if we could just table the item, at this point, you know, Mr. Vaca can go and do some research, and then we can bring it back later in the evening.
Thank you. Sorry to pick on this one, but it's our first, so we might as well put it down.
I understand.
Figure it out. Okay, so if there's no objection, we will indeed table that one till our later session. And we'll move on to Public Works, which is a professional service agreement with the Furman Group, WT 11-01, North Pleasant Valley Groundwater Desalter Project.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, council members. This item before you, as mentioned, is a professional services agreement with the Furman Group to provide governmental relations assistance, and in this case, specifically towards securing funding through the United States Bureau of Reclamation under the Title 16 program, which is specifically for water reclamation or reuse projects. The Furman Group has been, under an agreement previously with the city, to provide the same type of governmental relation lobbyist services for the city related to the desalter project. They, Furman Group actually was instrumental in preparing the language and formulating this Title 16 funding program, and a couple years back, they were assisting the city with tracking and with the intent to move forward and applying for this funding source. At that time, a year or so back, the Title 16 program was put on hold due to a ban on earmarks, and there's revisions needed to the program. Furman Group recently let us know that that's been done. The Title 16 program is in, back and in effect, and actually currently, right now, we just received notice that it's working its way through the House Appropriations Committee in Washington, and the House actually directed 35 million to be programmed for this Title 16 funding program. So that's working its way through the legislation up in Washington. So the city's eligible, you know, our project fits the eligibility requirements, and we've actually started the first step, actually, I think, one or two council meetings ago, council did direct and approve this middle of a feasibility study that was a first step requirement to get in line for this funding. The Furman Group had been helping us along with advisory capacity, and that's the services that they'll continue to provide as we move forward. That feasibility study has been submitted to the regional office of the Bureau of Rec and is under review. There's time constraints on getting that reviewed and approved. Furman Group is tracking that for us, and once it comes out of that review for approval, it'll go on to, and this is a critical element, that the Furman Group will assist us with making sure our project is actually named on the list of projects, then that will be proposed for funding. So in essence, that's specific work that Furman Group will be doing for us under this agreement, to track this through, I think, towards the end of the year is when the decision's going to be made, if it will be, you know, put on that list as a name of project for funding, and then the final, working through the ultimate approval into next year, possibly mid-year or so, with the approval, what we anticipate is the approval of the funding. It is up to 25% funding of a project, so right now, with a $30 million estimated project cost for the desalter, we're anticipating seven and a half million dollars in grant funding, or through the Title 16 project is what we've applied for. So staff reports lists a few other, you know, items that Furman Group will continue to help, or will help the city with, the staff, on fostering the relationships with the Bureau of Rec, answering questions. They helped review the feasibility study, and will continue to, the idea is for them to continue to help move this along through the process, and with the intent of securing that funding for the desalter project.
Wonderful. Anything else?
No, no other, that completes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You paused, so I thought you were done. Questions, Mr. Kildee?
Dave, if in fact we do get in line, and if in fact, I know it's prognostication to a certain extent, but if we do get approval on this, is it a one lump sum that we get, or is it based upon invoice, or how does that, how does that grant work?
I've actually not been too certain of the particulars on that. I imagine it's reimbursement-based, is what typically these type of funding sources are. That'd be based on, you know, a submittal of invoices or what, then they'll, they'll create that, that process and the guidelines on how to proceed through with that, with submitting expenses, and then for reimbursement. And I'm not too sure if we'd receive all that at one lump sum at the end, or if it would be periodic through the project.
And just another quick question, this Furman Group is fairly well-versed on the ins and outs of this process?
Yes, they are. And I will also add, and, you know, we, this is a budgeted item that's been included in the adopted budget, and then looking ahead towards the progression of our desalter project, we anticipated obtaining the benefit of this type of agreement, so that has been budgeted.
Thank you.
A couple of questions if I could. I think, actually, Mr. Kildee, you're right, it may end up being like a, similar to a Prop 84 reimbursable grant-type scenario, so you run these two concurrently, well, hoping we would get it, but that's a little presumptuous on my part, but... Two things. One, I had some difficulty deciding whether this contract was for $120,000 or $125,000. The staff report says $125,000. The contract itself, under fees and expenses, under number three, says $120,000. And Exhibit B, for total compensation, including reimbursement for actual expenses, may not exceed $120,000. Can someone enlighten me? It's a minor question, but then I've got another question as well.
So as that mentions in there, in item, item three on fees and expenses on big page five, where it allows the additional expenses, you know, with prior written approval, it'll take that action to do, to go anything further above the $120,000. So our action to deny it is to approve the agreement with a total expenditure authority of $125,000, and the, you know, the initial term and total fee that Furman's approved for is the $10,000 a month for a total of $120,000. Yet we have the authority to go above that, up to $125,000 from council, upon your approval, if needed for those additional expenses. In the past work that Furman has done for us under the similar type of retainer agreement, I don't believe we've ever, they've ever requested, or we've ever paid anything above and beyond the monthly retainer.
Kind of your contingency fund, is it the $5,000?
Correct. Yeah, I just, I'm kind of puzzled, because that's not the way Section 3 is written, and I don't want to pick nits, but anyway, it's a relatively small amount, but it's, it says monthly expenses will not exceed $500 without prior written approval by the city, and cumulative expenses will not exceed 5% of the total amount of $120,000. So if I do the, am I, if I look at it this way, that would, 5%, I'm just doing this off the top of my head, Mr. Klosz, it would be 4,800 bucks, so it'd be $125,000?
It'd actually be 5% is another 6,000, so technically 126,000.
You're right. So much for doing the math off the top of my head.
We chose, I guess, a more rounded number of 125,000, especially based on previous experience of really not needing anything additionally above and beyond. So we felt that the terms as presented here are acceptable.
Okay, my primary question, Madam Mayor, is with respect to the $10,000 a month retainer. So my experience has been relative to lobbying firms, you can do it one of two ways, in terms of retention. You can do an hourly rate with a, or TNM basically not to exceed, or you can do what in this case is a true retainer. Can you tell me how the $10,000 a month was arrived at? And what I'm getting at is, what's the bang we're getting for our buck? No disparagement of Furman at all, great reputation. I just want to know what we're getting for 10,000 a month?
Right. We're getting the representation of the lobbyist that's actually played a role in writing and assisting the development of this funding program, so as far as being very well-versed and understanding the ins and outs and details, along with the, you know, the congressional powers that be that are administering this program, and essentially, to get that level of assistance, of lobbying, that is the, and that is the rate that we had paid previously also. So it wasn't a negotiated, or, you know, a rate with any specific, more specificity to it than what we understand that they already have provided for us, and will continue to provide those level of services. So I know that doesn't give a whole lot of details to answer that question, but essentially, this is the cost that the city's looking at, to have these level and type of services to move this, you know, hopefully secure that funding and have the best chance of possible.
Well, no, it doesn't quite get to where I was going, but I can read, the scope of work is relatively detailed. I just sat back and thought to myself, okay, what is it that's going to be occurring on a monthly basis? And I can go to the scope of work, but there's no tie between that and the amounts being charged as you would otherwise have in a professional services agreement. And I understand that this is a different creature. This is a lobbyist form of agreement, and it's just done a little differently. I think I'll just conclude my comment.
But wouldn't it, if we're giving them the $10,000 retainer, they still have to account to you for what they do?
They, we're in communication with them, and they give a report of their actions, and, you know, it's not itemized hour by hour with an hourly rate, with a total dollar amount equaling 10,000, but it's a, you know, we have been and will continue to be in contact with them regularly, and get updates on what they have been doing, and they're, you know, what they're performing for us.
So let's say there's a month where they don't do something, and we've paid them $10,000. Does that go towards service they might provide more than, they might provide $20,000 worth the next month? I mean, so their services are fluctuating throughout the year, it's not always the same month to month to month?
You know, and how they look at it really is, what's the end game? And it's going to take, you know... And it's going to take, you know, the effort of, of whatever's going to be needed on their part, whether it's two hours one week or 40 hours another week with meetings. It's looked at at the total in-sum game of securing this funding, you know, providing us the highest probability of securing this funding at the end.
So it's kind of like a progress billing almost as well as a retainer, kind of an arrangement?
Yeah, and, and, no, it helps, just in terms of accountability. And I see under scope of work, Section I, that, that the group is required to update the city regularly via conference calls, memoranda, and meetings. Maybe we could ask that that, that those updates be provided on a, at least on a month, I would want to see it on a monthly basis, to know what's going on.
Instead of regularly, you'd like to say, have it say monthly?
Well, no, I don't think, I don't think it has to say, I don't think the language has to change, but I, if my colleagues support this, I would want to hear from them on a monthly basis, and I'd want, or at least have them update city staff on a monthly basis and have staff report to us on a monthly basis what's going on. If you think that's too often, that's a separate item, but, or a separate question. But I, I, I don't think it's too often.
I think they have been doing that.
Right. That's appropriate, and we can do that.
This is not uncommon. We've done this over the years, same thing. Here's a goal, we have to reach this goal. Here's how much it's going to cost us for this reset, it's part of the contract. Will they receive it in a certain, and in the summertime, when all the legislators are gone, you may see, you know, not $10,000 worth of work because they're gone. But if he comes back, when they come back, he may be working, they may be working a lot more than that during those next months.
Plus, he's working with the departments of, not all the
I know, vacation
Guys that get all those vacations like the legislators.
Right. Well, this is a, this is an administrative agency work effort. You know, it's not Congress per se. Well, it is, it isn't, it isn't. It's kind of a
It is.
It's a combination.
That's right.
So.
And you don't get much done in the summer, you've got to know that.
Your Honor, I just would like to add to the conversation, this is similar to our lobbyist in Sacramento.
Exactly.
We pay a retainer and
That's it.
When the legislators are in Sacramento, they're working all the time.
Mm-hmm.
They're working more than all the time from August through September, when everything's going on 24 hours a day. And other times, they're, they're working, but our bill to the Gonzales group, Gonzalva, don't fluctuate. We pay them a specified amount.
And that's, and you and Mr. Morgan make good points, and I understand that. I mean, I used to work in the legislature. It just, I would like, just from an accountability standpoint, to make sure that we see, you know, measure or reports where we can measure the progress, hopefully, being made. So.
I think staff has noted that, correct? I have one question. Do we have any other questions? Just, do you happen to remember the total number that we've spent so far with them? Does anybody?
I don't know that number off the top of my head. I don't know if Lucy's here tonight. I don't know if she might have that info.
And how long? It's been a couple of years now, hasn't it?
Yeah.
We didn't have them last year.
Right.
Oh, we let them go, we had them and then we didn't have them, now we're back.
That's right, that's right.
January 2014 was when council retained them initially.
There it is, right there.
Yeah.
I believe, for the record, Lucy McGovern, City of Camarillo. I believe we've had them on retainer for about 18 months, around a year and a half, and it's been at about the $10,000 a month range.
Okay. So, so there was a break, we retained and then we didn't, and then we retained them again?
Exactly. There was a six months and then a year, and then now another year.
Right.
And just as a matter of, just clarification, when they submit their invoices on the monthly basis, they do include a monthly activity log of everything they've done for that month. And that is part of the invoicing, on top of the phone calls and the, and the emails that we get.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Could I get a follow-up? So just want to make sure I'm clear on this.
Lucy, don't go away. We have a question.
I'm sorry, Lucy, just want, I just want to make sure I'm clear. So they've been on retainer for 18 months, but the only bill for the months that they provide services, is that right?
No.
Or is it 18 months consistent?
Why don't you tell us all the dates and the
Yeah, not now.
Okay. If I can, off the top of my head, I know that was going to happen. So they were, when we first hired them, it was, I want to say it was December of 2015?
Four, fourteen?
About January of
January of 14, I thought.
That's the construction
Oh, that's the
There was a six-month period. Then there was a 12-month period, and
And those months were for services rendered, then?
Yes. Yes.
Your Honor, we did have, one of the reasons we did do that kind of thing is, there was times when there's a great chance, because of certain legislation going through, that we needed their efforts to try to gain this, this funding. Well, now we're back at it again.
Right. So initially, what we hired them was to track WRTA.
Right.
So the Water Resources and Recovery. And they were tracking WRTA funding through that program, and it was adopted by Congress. But one of the problems with that is that it was administered, the portion that we would be funding through was administered through the Corps of Engineers, and it was more along the lines of a third-party funding. So it was very narrow in scope that a third party outside of the Corps of Engineers could actually apply for funding. And so we were waiting for over a year to get the guidelines put together for that so we could apply for it, and they never came through. So then that's where the Title 16 opportunity was created, and it got re, I guess it's got reenacted
Right.
And because it was, it was frozen for a while. And so now that, that, that whole effort has now been revamped for no earmarks. So then now they're forming a new program under Title 16. Hopefully, that'll give a little bit of clarity on it.
So do it.
I know the first time around, Your Honor, when Charlotte and I did some lobbying with them in Washington, hitting the different agencies, it sounded very, it sounded very positive at that time.
So that'll show me the money stuff.
I'll move to authorize the city manager to sign a professional services agreement with the Furman Group for a amount not to exceed $125,000.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, please vote. And that does pass unanimously. So let's go down to
Can we go back to finance?
I don't see Mr. Oh.
No, we're, we'll come back to that after council reports.
Okay. So let's go to
Let me suggest, Madam Mayor, you move on to council reports, and then we'll come back and get the announcements for closed session.
Okay. So let's go to new business, and the first would be the city manager?
No reports, Madam Mayor.
The city attorney?
No report.
Nothing to report. City council. Let's start with Mr. Trimbley tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have any meetings, I was just looking at our, our reports on meetings attended under AB 1234, and I realized I don't have any meetings to report on specifically. Two things if I can, two questions of staff to look into. One is the status of the programming, the traffic light that's been set up but is non-operational at Pettit and Village Drives. And I know we've all been waiting on that for a long time. Do you have any update on?
Yes, I do. And the efforts that have been ongoing is, the construction was going forward, and city staff became aware of, a portion of the signal pull that we felt wasn't the appropriate application. So progress was halted, and all hands on deck to come up with a revised design essentially is what's been happening. Minor revisions, but those are going through the final review process at Caltrans to revise the permit that was issued. The developer, D.R. Horton, is who's responsible for the construction. So they're preparing the revised design. It's at Caltrans for what we hope is the final last revision and approval of the permit to continue with the work. We anticipate, and everybody's been cooperating and working on this as quickly as possible. And, you know, as far as exact timing for that being turned on, I don't have an exact construction date yet. And once we have that, we can, I can share that. Like I say, we expect it to get approved out of Caltrans. It's in their hands in the next couple of weeks, hopefully. And then construction, final construction should move forward in the next following couple of weeks. So hopeful in a, in a month or two, it should be activated.
Okay. I will readily confess, I had no idea that that, it could be so complicated, but I'm, I'm taking that one at face value. I just, selfish interest at heart, I pass through there every week, weekday morning. The second thing is, is before my time on the council, my understanding, and this was brought to my attention by a citizen last week, that the council, I think it was last August, discussed a potential for establishing a quiet zone relative to freight trains. And the question was asked of me, Tony, do you have any idea what the status of that endeavor is? And of course, my response was, excuse me, I hadn't heard about that one before. Can you give me any kind of idea as to what the status of that effort is? I know it's a multi-year
Yes.
Effort.
That's correct. And it is programmed in our, in our CIP. And you're correct also, it's a multi-year effort. And I think it's at least two to three years out for getting going on that. There's some preliminary work that can be done. But essentially, it's, it's creating what's called a sealed corridor of improvements at the crossings, essentially entrance and exit gates, pedestrian gates. And it takes that first step of putting in these hard improvements to make it a more secure crossing. And once that's in place, then it could be a candidate for what's called a quiet zone. And that's a whole nother process to go through with the, with the railroads, the agencies. It's Union Pacific is track ownership out there, obviously Metro Lincoln Amtrak are on the, are on the track. And that, essentially, an application for quiet zone is then entered into, and the details looked at and worked through to see if it qualifies. And a quiet zone essentially with those high, higher level of safety measures put at the crossing that the, it lifts, it minimize, lessens some of the requirements for the engineer to blow the horn. It doesn't necessarily take away the, the ability for the horn to be sounded at any time, the engineer always has that ability. But with these improvements in place, then the idea is, is that it's identified as a zone, as a quiet zone, that there, you know, less need for sounding the horn on a, on a typical basis.
Okay. So bottom line is, it's being worked on. May I ask that maybe we get a status report on it in about six months from now, just to see what the status of it is? And just to keep that fresh so that we can, we can kind of track it as it's going. I did have one other additional question on that, if I can, and that is, is that involving some sort of federal regulatory approval from the federal, I don't even know what agency that is? Railroad? Railroad regulatory?
I don't know if it's actually a federal agency at all
DOT?
That's involved in that. The California Public Utilities Commission governs all crossings, the CUPUC
Okay.
Is, is, is the, is the main reviewing and approving agency there. But obviously, Union Pacific owns the track through there, so it's, it's working with them also. So.
And they are cooperative, we are discussing this with them, they are cooperative in terms of discussions?
It hasn't, we haven't reached that level yet. Again, it is going to take the implementation of the design and then construction of these improvements first, even before it qualifies to be a quiet, to even enter into the discussion for the quiet zone.
All right. I appreciate that. Thanks. I know this isn't an item on the agenda, so I really can't go with it farther, but thank you for the update.
That's it. Mr. Morgan?
Well, I still have a tough time. We've got back and forth to the doctor and so on about the eye, but that's, we had to keep things going. I went to the Association Water Agency meeting, and I'd like to invite all of you to our Holiday Mixer, our corporate night we have every year. It'll be held, believe it or not, in Camarillo, and it's going to be held at the, what's that little building right there next to the, where they're moving the pizza parlor across the street? Ah, it's where they do music, right there in that
Opera City?
Rock City. Yeah, Rock City. It's going to be held, Rock City. It doesn't look like it's big enough, but they sure has 200 people going there and the, you know, places with food and stuff, so we're off and running. They've had it done before. This will be on the December the 7th. And so on December 7th, we have that here. And it starts at, at 5:30 on Thursday, December 7th. And if you're interested in going to places that can learn something, the water, the Waterwise Breakfast Program is a good one. You have two of those coming up before the end of the year, and one would be in September, well, November. Waterwise programs on the 16th of November. It's held at the Marriott in Oxnard on the freeway there, Courtyard. Otherwise, oh yes, one other one. That'll be in October, the 19th. Waterwise Breakfast will be at the same place. So if you're interested about learning up-to-date things about water and not just this county, but we bring speakers in throughout the state to speak. And so if you have a chance, come join us. Of course, Fourth of July Firework Show was fantastic. We got so many compliments, even on the phone calling us and stuff, saying how good that was. I was just sitting there worried that I didn't want to get another call from the bench saying it's not going or no. That would put me in two years in rowing jam like that. But we, we got assured and shot off an early one, thank goodness. That made me feel better. But the show went well, and everyone's very well pleased, and they left orderly and no The APCB Board, our Air Pollution Control Board, will not be meeting in July and August, not until September. So that's all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mrs. Craven?
I attended an RDP meeting, and I attended a Ranch Foundation Board meeting. I also attended, stepped in for the mayor at a dog show out at the university. I have to admit, it was the first dog show I've ever been to. And they were very proud of it. They said it was bigger and better than last year's. They moved to a different location on the, at the university. And their estimate with as many people as were here was that they brought about a million and a half dollars into
Goodness.
You know, with staying at hotels, buying food, going out wherever they went in the evenings, and, and the whole thing, so
Thank you for doing that.
Thought I'd pass that along. I, too, have heard nothing but compliments about the fireworks show. And I just want to tell you that there was, there was discussion at the YMCA one morning, and a woman said, well, after last year, she was taking her family to Fillmore. I have no idea what Fillmore's fireworks program is like, but she was sure it was going to be better than ours. So somebody told her that I had told them that it was much, much better this year. We were going to take the money from last year and this year and make up for it. So she stayed and said she will, now she will never consider Fillmore again. I just have one other thing that's not so complimentary, but there was a power outage. It was a planned power outage to, at least my housing division, I guess, all the way up from Las Poses up following Temple and to the east. It also meant that the signal at Las Poses and Temple was out from 8:30 till 6:30 that day. That hit two times when it's really heavily trafficked. There was no advance notice. I'm just wondering if these things that Edison is planning, they sent us a letter telling us about 30 days ahead of time that we would be without power from 8:30 till 5:30. It went an hour later. But does the city receive those? And if we do, can we have them give advance notice to motorists that there's a problem? I mean, like, we're giving advance notice to the people on Central. You know, if, if, if there's going to be just four-way stop there, it really, the traffic was backed up down to loop both ways.
First part of the question, yes, the city is aware of when Edison is out there, especially the planned outages, it's related to work they're doing out there. And most typically, if not all the time, there's an accretion permit issued, so we're aware of that. And then when it affects the signal, obviously, we're aware of that also, and the stop signs are put out. And we can look into that as, you know, review the locations and, and the need for, you're mentioning, you thinking advance in the, in the days in advance?
Yes. Yes, I think some of those people, if they had thought it was going to be like that and the hours, you know, they, they probably would not have come back that way. They'd have, because Las Poses during the rush hour is people going from Lewis Road, I think mainly Lewis Road, all the way down to the freeway at Springville. I think mainly Lewis Road, all the way down to the freeway at Springville. And there are a lot of people, a lot more people coming through there since Springville opened. And I believe that they especially wouldn't have come back at night if they had known it was going to last that long. But the other thing was when, just a few weeks ago, when Las Poses, when Ponderosa and Temple were closed for a day or maybe into the second day due to an accident, we had tall stop signs. These were not even as high as my knee sandwich boards ones. And I just comment, I think that the taller ones are seen better as people come speeding up. Those are my comments on that.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Kilde?
Uh, let's see. I did attend a VRSD meeting. Also was at the fireworks, like thanked staff for all the hard work that they did. It was a really good show. Best part about that is that I always park my car over in the Mission Oaks area. Not the best part, but this is kind of cool. I don't know why I get this kind of strange thing in my head. But a, a bunch of people leave at the same time and they have to cross the street on Santa Rosa. And there's literally hundreds and hundreds. And the police are there. And I don't know how they coordinate all this, but they do a fantastic job of this. And the best part about it is, one of the officers says in a very, very loud voice, pedestrians, cross. And boy, we all cross. And it's a really neat thing. I don't know if you ever get a chance to do it, but it's worth to go to the fireworks and do that and watch how the police do the traffic control there. It's, it's, it's really, really efficient. That's, it's so fun just to, to cross with
How many times do you cross?
Well, it's like 2,000 people all at the same time crossing Santa Rosa. Now, how often do you get a chance to do that?
That's true.
So, I don't know. Anyhow, I guess it's my kind of strange mind, but I, I really find that, it's my third time doing it. Anyhow, on to another item. I did get a call and an individual that rides on our bike lanes wanted me to make sure that staff and council know that it really appreciates our bike lanes. And perhaps now in the summertime, we're getting more bike volume. So they really appreciate our bike lanes here. I also got a call and the individual may have gone up to staff on this before, but apparently there's some relatively large potted plants on the westerly end of Ventura just before where the new shopping center's going to be coming in. And the huge, I think they're huge trees there. They've never been planted. I don't know if any of you have ever seen it. But they're in a box. And one of them, I think, is, is dead. But he's wondering what the other two, I think that they're privately owned. It's not city property. But he's just wondering if there's something that can be done with those big plotted, I think they're just really huge trees. I don't know what they're intended on doing. But instead of having them unused, if there's another place perhaps in the city that we might be able to put them. Maybe staff has some more information on that or can look into that.
I don't have any particular information on those large trees. I don't know, Mr. Vaughn.
They are on the Amara site. They're just to the west of the Home Depot property.
That's it.
And they're on private property. And I believe they're remainder trees that weren't used in landscaping in a prior project. That's an assumption. So we can look at seeing if they can be utilized in future landscaping. But typically, if those aren't planted, they either get root balls and then they're unhealthy to plant because then they blow over in the wind. Or they're already rooted where they are and they'd have to be relocated.
Yeah, I know it'd be a big job. The individual looked at this and saw it and said, instead of having them there not being used, perhaps there is another use somewhere with this. Also, where I live on Waverly, we had another power outage last week. And we were out for, I think about, it was from about 6 o'clock. I think they came back in on about 9:30, 10. And are we still looking on improvements in the grate? Because what I understand is that there's several transformers there. And one of them has a problem. All of them shut down. So I was wondering if we still are looking into Edison to see if we can keep improving. It's off Dunnigan and Waverly there.
Okay. Was that a planned outage, do you recall?
No, it was not a planned.
Or unplanned?
To my knowledge, David, it was not a planned outage, no.
Right, which is typically due to, you know, equipment failure.
It was equipment. From my knowledge, it was equipment failure. Yeah.
And we do have a, you know, a regular discussion with Edison as they're continuing doing different improvement work, both planned and unplanned, when they have to respond to that type of an outage. It's unplanned, of course. They do update us also on an annual basis on what they call the reliability review. The Edison rep comes in and, and talks about their planned projects upcoming to increase reliability within their service area here. And so they do have projects planned coming into the future for those, you know, types of improvements to their system.
Yeah, I just bring that up because several of my residents have bought generators because of the outages there. And as when the power does, you know, have issues, that the generators do, you know, come on. I'm thinking about buying one myself. So anyhow, if you could keep, you know, pedal on the metal on that and make sure that we can, see if we can make that a little bit, a little bit of better situation there. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. You had one more, Mrs. Craven?
I had one more. I just wanted to tell you about this article I read in the LA Times. It's an opinion piece. But it's about a bill that City Camarillo and many other cities have taken a position of oppose on. And he does a very good job of explaining, this was in Monday's LA Times, he does a very good job of explaining why it's a bad deal for residents for, to, for the telecommunications companies, the big ones, to, and how they do it, to not be able to put their new antennas on anything that belongs to the public without our being able to say anything. It's a very good piece. It also explains how they got to the place where it plowed through the Senate and now has gone through the Finance Committee in the Assembly. And it will be going to two other committees. So if, for those who didn't see it, I'll ask the clerk to pass it along to you.
Thank you. Okay.
Could I ask a question, your staff?
Certain.
On 54, the bill that sent Bill AB, I can't remember which one, 54 that tells counties that you'd have no right, you've got to not tell people about illegal aliens kind of thing. Does anybody know where that bill is now? Being released from jail?
I don't have a current status of that bill, but I, I can certainly get that to council.
I'd like to find out what they're doing with that.
Okay. I have a few things. Last Friday, we had a VCTC meeting. And along with all the usual things, there was something on the agenda that someday will affect us. The commission approved going out to request a proposal, an RFP. And let me just read, let me give you a little background. The commission in the spring approved the partnership between Caltrans and VCTC, where Caltrans will provide the project management while VCTC provides the contract management. And the two agencies will work together. So the RFP would be, would cover a wide variety of engineering, environmental work, along with extensive public outreach, in order to select the preferred project alternative that will ultimately shape the widening project of the 101 from basically State 23 in Thousand Oaks to State Route 33 in, where it goes up to Ventura. So that's the first step of, anybody want to have a guess on how many years? I'll give you the chance, Tom.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. But you got to start somewhere. So that was approved. So they're going out with an RFP. And hopefully someday, something will be done on the 101. But you can't say we aren't trying. And working with the state and Caltrans. But they seem to have a, so far, a good working relationship with it. So when it comes to that public outreach part, that's where we in Camarillo really have to make sure our voices are heard and, and talk about what's best for us.
Can I ask a question about that?
Uh huh.
Does that include the two bridges still left to widen that will help us do that work easier?
They have to figure out what they propose to do. And then yes, if they were going to widen that freeway there, they'd have to do the bridges.
Good, good, good.
Which will probably add another 20 years. But so let me see what else I have. Oh, I had a request by someone. And tell me if we're working on this. I thought we had actually solved this issue. It was on utility billing and the ability for one of our customers to set up, to have automatic monthly payments withdrawn from their checking accounts.
You can do it.
And they swore to me that as of Monday, they couldn't do it. So is it an issue they're having? Or is it our issue?
Mine is done every month.
Yep.
Oh, I'd have, we'd have to look into that. I'm not aware of the issue. So do you think that, that it's possible? I'm hearing up here that it is
Yeah, I pay that way. And I have been for 10, 12 years.
You live in Camarillo's district?
Okay. And then another one is, can you do an automatic monthly credit card payment? I'm not sure about that. You know about that one?
No, I, we didn't bring that one back. I think that we just did it so that you can have it withdrawn from your checking.
Checking. Okay. So there's, there's what, I did two-prong. There's, they want to do the credit, automatic credit card charge, this particular person.
Get their points.
Probably get their points. But maybe, you know, if it helps people pay their bills, is it something we can look at and bring it back? We can look at that. They can pay with a credit card. But as far as an auto- Automatic monthly? I'm not aware of that. Okay. I wouldn't think it'd be that much hard since you already have the service there. So can you put that on your list? Thank you. I do want to compliment everyone that worked on the 4th of July. And I know Kathy Tally and Tom. Tom, we put Tom in charge. He was, and you're still living here. That means it worked, right? You didn't have to leave town. But it was, and the city manager, I know you all worked very hard on it, along with all the other organizations. And it was a very good night. People thoroughly enjoyed it. I timed it. We got 30 minutes and 3 seconds. She got us an extra 3 seconds. So we got our money's worth. And as everyone has said, it, it was great. So I, I thank all of you for working so hard on it. We get to walk in and we don't take credit for it, but thank you.
However, I think people's expectations are now higher.
Yeah, that's, that's true. I, I want to mention, and I know, Mr. Morgan, you didn't talk about it, but we do have the Fiesta this weekend. You want to give the times since I brought it up?
Well, since you want to know about it, the Fiesta, we've been working so hard. I mean, every day, there's about several things we have to do. All the people in this committee. We've gotten some fantastic responses from the community. I think this is going to be the biggest one ever. Because social media has gone crazy with this.
So it starts tomorrow?
It starts tomorrow and in the evening, 6 o'clock, the carnival opens. And it's a dollar, a dollar a ride for, you know, for youth, those under 18, a dollar a ride. And then that goes till 10 o'clock. If they don't use their tickets, they can use them the next day or so on. And then on Friday, it reopens again. This time, we have the park at Disdar will be open with music, food, beer gardens, and so on. And I got to tell you, the entertainment we put forward, we're getting compliments everywhere. We know that the Strawberry Festival tells us our entertainment's better than theirs. Because it is. And so we start with entertainment that, that evening with two bands. And then Saturday morning, everything breaks loose. And, oh yeah, carnival's going too that night. So the next morning at 5:30, the roads close, or sooner because of the new things that we're putting in. So they'll, they'll be filling up the stuff and closing the roads, probably 4 o'clock in the morning. Then we open the gates for the vendors to come in. And that starts at 5:30. Some of us will be out there early. And 200 vendors will be going in the streets at that time. That goes, it opens officially at 10 o'clock. And all, all traffic has to be off the street at that time.
So it's 10 to 10?
10 till 10 that next evening. We have two stages. The other stage will go in that morning too, because the streets are closed. So we have a west stage that's got a lot of local talent on there. It's very, very good. Again, this might be the best one we've had. On Sunday, right now, we're not sure about the fire trucks though. We may have a fire truck show on Saturday on the, on Arneal Road Bridge, half of it. Mr. Dundas from Dial Security has several of them. He's got friends that has them. He's going to call me tonight. Then when, on Sunday, that's replaced by the car show. We have 75 cars that can go in. And I'm sure we'll have more than we, than can get in. The car show, along with all the street stuff going on, it's going to be a fun time. Lot of people. I think you're going to find that even, and in talking to other restaurants across the street even, they get affected because of so many people. So it'll be a fun weekend. Come out and enjoy, have fun. At least joy is in the VIP room. Everyone that's sponsored gets to come in the VIP room and have, have some food, which is
You didn't tell the times on Sunday?
Pardon me?
Time on Sunday.
Oh, Sunday. It starts at 12 o'clock. And it goes until, those start have to closing down at 6, the vendors do. But the carnival goes till 7. And then the, and entertainment down at the other state, main stage goes till 7.
Okay. So it's, so just time-wise, Thursday, what time?
Thursday, it starts at 6.
6 to
10.
10.
But then the rides down starting about 9:30. So there's no more tickets sold.
Okay. Then Friday, it's 5
It's 6 o'clock.
6 again.
Until 10.
Okay. And Saturday, it's 10 to 10?
Yes.
And Sunday, 12 to 6?
Yes.
Yay. Okay.
The other thing too, so everyone knows, you can get on the website, or you can get on our, you know, the Facebook and find where our trolleys are. The trolleys are a little different this year because we changed from the Boys and Girls Club. They have a baseball tournament going on. And we don't interfere with their parking. But we're going to the Cameron Christian Church School, Christian School at Arneal and Las Poses. That'll be one of the trolleys. That'll be a nice one because it's clean and clear and
Cornerstone.
Well, it's not Cornerstone anymore. One of our board members is a member of that. And it's not that anymore.
Back to Camarillo?
Cameron Christian Church School. Quick Christian church, I don't mean school.
If people are looking for the sign, the
Across the street from, from McDonald's. And they'll have signs all over, like we do, to show you where they are. The other one would be on the west end, next to the mortuary, the Griffin, Griffin Mortuary in that parking lot. Again, signs will be there to direct them. That'll take you to the west end of the event, near this west end stage. You'll have two going back and forth at all times, going to the 99 Cent store parking lot, the bowling alley parking lot, because there's a lot of parking over there. And you can walk two blocks if you want to. But that's, that's the other two. And then you can park in the parking lot at the railroad station. VCTC gave us permission, but they said it's a public parking lot. And we have every trolley that goes back and forth on the, on the east end goes through there, picks up and goes up, and then goes back around. So we have a lot of transportation we've set up for people to get there.
Great. All righty. Busy weekend. So that's next weekend. I just want to remind you that the next weekend, we have a concert in the park. Last Saturday, we had a full house for Motown. In two weeks, this is a new one, we're doing a Justin Timberlake tribute. So it is, we'll see what, bring out a, maybe a couple of generations down, younger. We'll see.
A lot of them are planning girls' nights out. Oh, are they? Oh, there you go. And he kind of, he does look like him too. As well, it sounded like him.
That's funny she said that because we were out collecting money the last time. And there were at least three I ran across the lazy, and there, weren't where their husbands just having girls' night out.
Well, to see Justin Timberlake.
You might also want to mention, even the week after that, this Camarillo is going to be busy. You're going to have the gala for the Metalarx out of the Camarillo House. And that'll be sold-out event too.
The Taste of Camarillo is on the last Sunday of the month. And you can order their tickets online. I know that. I think that is all I have. It's now 6:07. Should we go ahead and
Madam Mayor, why don't we have the closed sessions announced? And then let's go back to the funding item. We have a simple solution.
Okay.
Well, starting with the announcements, I already announced the closed session for the sanitary district. Closed session for the council legal, conference with legal council, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2. Number of cases is two. And then the other one is a conference with real property negotiator. That's authorized by Government Code Section 54956.8. The property is the former courthouse building on Ventura Boulevard. The agency negotiators are listed in the agenda. The negotiating parties are VCTC and the City of Camarillo. And under negotiation are price in terms of payment. Did you want me to discuss the indemnity issue?
No, I can discuss it.
Okay. If you could
So we're going back to the agenda item under finance then, which is the approval of the event funding.
For the record, what's being passed out is the special event permit for the Fiesta. The cover page. And then paragraph 16 is the indemnity language.
Basically, Madam Mayor, what we would suggest is that for this funding agreement and for the others that already have special event permits issued, we would simply conform the indemnification language of the funding agreement to be exactly what is in the special event permit.
Perfect. Okay.
And hopefully that'll satisfy council's concerns.
Mm-hmm. So, so is it different, so when we're, when we're making our motion, then, to approve this one, we're simply gonna exchange item number two with this item number sixteen?
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
And that's great, because it's already been agreed to by both parties.
Exactly.
Can we just have ten seconds to read it? Paragraph sixteen?
Certainly.
There's a whole lot more. The language you didn't like is still there, but there's a whole.
Oh, is it? I, I, as I said, I had, I wanted to go look.
I believe the concern was, I believe the concern was whether the special events language matched up with what the funding agreement, and, and, because that was what you'd indicated the insurance companies approved.
But the other concern she had was council satisfactory to city.
Right.
That is there.
Right.
And that's good, because that means our insurance company already knows about it. That was my concern.
Yes.
Getting hung out in the middle.
So just a quick question on paragraph sixteen, if I can. As I understand it, in the parenthetical, so's applicant slash permittee identifies will defend at city's request and council. You mean with council, satisfactory to city? Is that what the intent of that language is?
Yes.
Instead of and?
Well.
With.
At the discretion of the city attorney, I might suggest changing the word and for the future, and with.
And we could do that for this funding agreement.
I think that would be a good idea.
Or you could put the word with after the word and, either way.
You get charged by the word.
And this is good, because this also goes into vendors, et cetera, so that's good. Okay, Your Honor, let me try this. I'll move to approve FY seventeen eighteen community event funding agreement with the Camrio Fiesta Association, in the amount of twenty-two thousand one hundred dollars for in-kind services for the Camrio Fiesta and Street Fair, with the deletion of the existing, or what was in the pack at number two indemnification, and the in, paragraph, and the insertion with the title indemnification of the two paragraphs that are under sixteen of the special event permit.
With the change of and to with?
With the change of and to with, so that this would read at city's request with council satisfaction to city.
Oh, I see why it says and, because it's both, they have to request it and council, the council is satisfactory to the city.
We would suggest and with as the appropriate language.
Okay, and with.
To do both, yeah. Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? You can't discuss.
I'm just asking him. Again, I can't comment, even though this is for future.
Correct. You cannot discuss it.
But just to clarify, the indemnification that we were reading was the one that the Camrio Fiesta has already signed?
That's correct.
Because it's coming out of that special.
And you also will not be voting, Mr. Morgan?
Oh, I was gonna put yellow.
Well, you can, you should abstain.
Okay.
Well, that's what yellow is.
All right, well, I don't know, I don't have voting buttons.
First time I pushed this, I gotta push it.
All right, go ahead.
All right, he doesn't want to vote, participate in the vote, so we just.
All right.
Okay.
All right, with that, we have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? And the record will reflect that Mr. Morgan is not voting. Please vote. And that does pass for yes with Mr. Morgan not voting. So with that, we have closed sessions announced. We have a study session. With that, we will recess till seven-thirty. I'd like to call the meeting of the Camrio City Council back to order. We have been in a study session and have no action items to report. With that, I'd like to ask Mr. Councilmember Trimbley if you would lead us in the flag salute, please.
Thank you. After me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very much. We have a couple of presentations this evening, and the first one is very special. I would like to introduce all of you, and, and our people watching at home, to a very special resident of our community. And her name is Madison Gallo, and she's six years old, and she's been selected by the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation, the leading global organization focusing on type-one diabetes research, to represent the state of California at the two thousand and seventeen Children's Congress in Washington, DC. So we wanted to take the opportunity to recognize Madison, let her come and tell us a little bit about what she's gonna do, and let her know how proud we are of her. So it's very, very, very special. So Madison, if you want to bring your mom, Katie, I believe, up, and we'll meet you up here. We are so proud of you, and we want to hear about, are you excited?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful. So why don't you tell everybody about what you feel about going on your trip, and, and again, this is, this is Madison.
My name is Madison, and I am six years old. I was diagnosed with type-one diabetes when I was four. I wear an A insulin pump two, twenty-four-seven ACGM on my arm. So it lets my parents know my blood sugar number. I am looking forward to represent California this month in Washington, DC. I, I'm gonna teach other people about type-one diabetes for JDRF Congress. I am excited to meet my assemblywoman, Julia Brownlee, and Senators Diane Feinstein and Kamala Harris. Thank you for this award. I will accept this for the team people of people who keep me healthy and safe every day, called the Mad Squad.
Wonderful.
Wow.
We are so proud of you. It's, it's an honor to meet you. You've obviously learned a lot about what you have, and you're, and you're willing to share that with other people, and hopefully, someday, we'll find a cure, a cure for this. But you're, you're so brave, I mean, just to stand up, there's adults that don't like to get up here and talk like this, so you've done a great job. Would you like to say something as well?
Yeah, thank you. I grew up here in Camrio, and we briefly moved to Thousand Oaks, and I knew that when I had children, that this is a place that we wanted to raise a family. So we're so happy to be Camrio residents and love being involved in all of the programs. And we just also wanted to say that the support that the Pleasant Valley School District has given Madison, she just finished kindergarten at Los Primeros, but the support that they have given her with her teachers and nurses, and them following her on apps to know what she's doing to keep her safe, has just been really helpful to us and our family. Just wanted to let you know what a great job they're doing.
Thank you, Madison. Well, we have a few things for you. This is a certificate that's signed by all the council members, recognizing you for being such a special person in today's Madison's Day in the City of Camrio. So we are very, very proud of you. We wish you luck on your journey, hope you have a good time, and I know you'll represent the state of California and the City of Camrio very, very well. We also have a City of Camrio pin, so you could wear that on your, on your blouse when you go to Washington. And then an I Love Camrio sticker, that you could put it on a book or something. And then here's a good luck coin. It's a City of Camrio coin. So we, again, we are so proud of you. Have a great trip. Your mom's going with you, I assume, yes? And so we, we thank you so much for coming. Anything else you want to say?
Um, I'm really excited, because we get to eat cupcakes.
[laughing] That's a, that's a good day, any day you can have cupcakes. Would anyone else like to say something?
Oh, yes. I'd like to say she's a brave little girl, but she's also an excellent reader. Good job.
I started to say the same thing, that for that little, little girl, there's a lot of them can't read that well, and they don't have a problem. So you did fantastic.
Yeah, Madison, I think you have exceptional reading skills, and we are really proud of you. Thank you for representing us back in Washington, DC.
And congratulations, you're an excellent reader. You're gonna go places, Madison, and this is a very special day for all of us, and thanks for representing a lot of things, not the least of which is your family and your friends. I see a lot of your friends are here, so obviously, you're, you're a shining star, so congratulations, and keep up the good work. Everything's gonna be just fine for you.
Thank you. Again, thank you. It was an honor to meet you. That's official handshake. You'll have to do that when you go back and meet your congresswoman, or woman, you can shake her hand, and the senators, and, but again, thank you, thank you both for coming. We wish you a wonderful trip, and anxious to hear how it goes. You can send us a postcard. All righty, thank you. Jan.
[applause]
Get you underneath, you see him here in the middle? Get your mom in here, too.
Yeah, everybody, come together.
See him over there? He's on the picture.
All right. One, two, three, and one more.
Smile.
One, two.
She's so cute, it's hard to compete with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are all their friends. Someday, she'll probably be sitting right here. The next item on our agenda, we have another presentation. This is from the Livingston. I'll give him a second to get, to leave. We know you want to go home. Thank you for coming.
Madam Mayor, if I can, let me just take care of this housekeeping right now, based on my conversation with the city attorney. With no disrespect whatsoever to Livingston Memorial, my law firm does represent Livingston Memorial, one of my law partners, and so therefore, I'm gonna recuse myself from this, even though it's just a presentation, I'm gonna recuse myself from it, and wait in the, wait next door, and come get me when we're done.
Great. Thank you. So this is a presentation from Livingston Memorial Visiting Nurse Association and Hospice to let us know about the merger of the two, and how things are gonna go forward.
Yes, thank you so much for the opportunity to come and speak to you, and I'm sorry that Tony feels like he needs to recuse himself. He was instrumental in helping this merger happen. I'm, my first name is Lanyard, like one of those things around your neck, and last name is Dial, like dial the telephone. I'm a family physician by training, also board certified in geriatrics and hospice and palliative care, and for the last ten years, I've been the president, CEO, and medical director of Livingston Memorial Visiting Nurse Association. Livingston is a seventy-year-old community service that's providing home health, hospice care, and personal caregivers throughout Ventura County. Your own Camrio Hospice began forty years ago to provide hospice care in this community, long before anybody else was providing hospice care in this community. They were a whole group of volunteers, a board of members of volunteers, helping to ensure that people who were sick and, and near death were allowed an opportunity to have their wish, and be at home, or outside of a hospital, and have someone with them and die peacefully. When Medicare began its movement to pay for and develop medical hospice model, that began in the eighties, almost ten years after Camrio Hospice had created the volunteer services it was doing. Livingston Memorial became the first medical model hospice in Ventura County, and like our history, maintained itself as a nonprofit company. So I was involved at that point as the medical leadership for the medical hospice of Livingston, and have done that for the last thirty years. Last year, with the retirement of Sandy Nuremberg as the CEO of Camrio Hospice, Camrio Hospice's board and Livingston board began a conversation of could we better serve the community if two beloved nonprofits got together? Combining some of the overhead and the administrative resources, and yet still being able to raise sufficient dollars to serve the breadth of the community. Over the years that medical hospice has been in existence, Camrio Hospice and Livingston have worked very closely together, providing volunteers and homes of people on medical hospice. But Camrio Hospice has also identified niches within the medical model that, that don't work, providing care to people who don't want to sign up to hospice, who are not terminally ill at this point, but need support and care, and have continued to do that. And they've provided extensive bereavement services for families and loss of, people who've lost loved ones in the community. So bringing those resources, together with Livingston's medical model hospice, home health care and caregivers, provides us an opportunity to have a much larger umbrella of care in the community. The merger intention, which is now completed, we finished all the merger documents, all the legal proceedings as of April. We're now working towards and have hired all the employees who work there as Livingston employees. We've filed and been working with the City of Camrio to make sure all the documents are correct and changed with licenses. Our intention is to continue the services Camrio Hospice provided, to continue the events that Camrio Hospice did. The beloved farmer's market, now under Livingston's watch, will continue and work, and we've met with the individuals with the city involved in that. So I'm hoping that it's relatively seamless. We want to continue in the same location we're at, on Rosewood, and we want to make a minor change to the name, so everyone knows the merger's happened. It'll be, we've made the change as Camrio Hospice, a program of Livingston Memorial Visiting Nurse Association. That's the merger. We are excited by the opportunities that it provides, and I would be happy to answer any questions anybody has about it.
Great, thank you very much. Do we have questions? Mr. Kildee?
Yeah, I want to thank you for being here, and your staff members, and all that you've done for our community and other communities for a long, long time. Do you foresee any changes in the services that are being rendered at this particular point vis-à-vis into the future? I know that we've got a lot of, let's say, memory issues potentially that could be coming to the forefront here. The service has always been very strong. Do you see any additional services that might be down the pipeline?
Yeah, probably the largest is gonna be, right now in our country, there is a growing language called palliative care, that is hospice-like care, the compassionate along the side with the individual as they're terminally ill. But the palliative care service is a much bigger scope, helping people who are seriously ill. And right now, that movement has existed in our hospitals, so St. John's, Dignity Health Services at St. John's and Pleasant Valley, VCMC, CMH, Los Robles, all have palliative care services. Palliative care services in the home and in the community is the growing edge. Livingston has been doing that under our home health umbrella. Camrio Hospice has done that through volunteers. That service will become, in some structure, very similar to what happened to Medicare, taking over hospice. They will take over and develop a program called palliative care in our country. And that's gonna be a much larger and differently structured program than it is now. That's the biggest change I see, and I think we'll be well-positioned to be able to make sure that this community receives that benefit.
Thank you.
I think that you've been doing this for a while with hospice.
Personally, I have, absolutely.
Yes, because I -- my mom died a year and a half ago, and she was under hospice care. And I remember Livingston's memorial, the nurses coming to take care of her occasionally when we were needed. And then when she died, they were there to make it easy. And so you guys have been doing this for hospice for a while.
30 years. When Medicare created the medical model system, Livingston was the first to develop that program, and I was the medical person who helped them and have been helping them since then.
Oh, my goodness.
So, yeah, we've been doing it a long time.
Wow.
And I think I'm very well-versed in hospice care and very comfortable with the idea we're all going to pass away at some point in our lives, and having it be comfortable, peaceful at home and how we want it is the key part.
I appreciate, our whole family, really appreciate what you guys did.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your many, many years of dedicated service. I didn't realize that you have been 30 years. That's amazing. But thank you and your organizations for everything you do for the community. Glad to hear that. We're not losing one. We're just making it a part of the family.
And we have a lot of connections. Kevin will know that Maggie was a board supervisor when I started at the county hospital, so many years ago. And so there are a lot of connections here, and obviously with Tony. Tony was on the committee that helped this merger happen. He was on the Camrio Hospice Board at the time, so.
Very good, very good.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much for coming.
Yes, he did a great job.
The next item on our agenda would be public comment. I do have two speaker sheets, and just to remind everyone, I know, Matt, you know the rules, but we have one other speaker. You have three minutes, and at the podium, there's a timer, one that I can see and one that you can see, and it counts down. And when it gets to one minute, it turns yellow, just to let you know to wrap it up. And we ask that you give your name for the record before you begin. So our first speaker is Paul McLaren.
Paul McLaren. I'm a resident of Camrio. Additionally, I served on the Citizens Advisory Committee for Land Use. I have a degree in urban planning, and I work as a civil engineering assistant with the city of Santa Monica. I was tasked in Santa Monica with writing the city's wireless ordinance for small cell sites, and that ordinance was adopted in July of 2016. I've been asked to speak about Santa Monica's ordinance at various organizations, and I've been asked by other cities to provide information about our ordinance. I most recently gave a presentation to the Southern California chapter of the American Public Works Association. Since December 2016, we have now processed over 120 applications for new small cell sites in our eight-mile city in Santa Monica. We anticipate over 480 more small cell sites in that eight square miles in the next three years. I give that as my credentials, but today I'm here to talk to the residents of Camrio and the council about SB 649. This bill easily passed the Senate, and on June 29th, it went to the Conveyance and Communications Committee of the Assembly. And I would like to request that the city council, if they've not already done so, formally address our legislature and the committee chair, Miguel Santiago, and vice chair Jay Oronulty, and urge them not to pass this bill. I also urge any residents of Camrio to also send letters to these representatives to let them know of their opposition to the bill. This bill requires cities to lease public property to telecommunications companies while capping the rental rates for those leases. Furthermore, the bill eliminates discretionary review of local government to include regulatory and aesthetics of the installations, so long as the antennas are smaller than six cubic feet, which is nearly the size of a 55-gallon oil drum, and that the other equipment be as small as 35 cubic feet. I find this to be a disturbing situation, however, even more disturbing, and I think what people are failing to realize is that this opens up the door, because then to the 2012 Spectrum Act that was part of the middle-class tax relief act, then allows people, or allows these wireless companies to do modifications to these sites. And so long as those modifications are below a substantial change, cities have to approve them within a 60-day shot clock. So I gave some representations here. So this is what can be approved on the right here, under this SB 649, and then, once they do the modification, this is what it can become under the 6409 of the federal government. So in closing, I'm not opposed to wireless telecommunications. I want my smartphone to function. However, I know there's a better way, because I'm part of it in Santa Monica. Telecommunications companies have faced some obstruction of cities for some time now, so they backed Senator Huaso's bill and gave him a lot of money for his campaign, I'm sure. But I think that there is a better way. That's a win-win for citizens of communities as well as for the providers. And anybody who wants to know, I can provide them with the information of what we've done and how we're moving forward in Camrio. I have a fear that there's going to be a forest of ugly wireless installations poking up out of our skyline in every direction we look. So please, I urge, if it hasn't already been done, get out to these legislators and say no on SB 649.
And we have done that. We've gotten our letters off, but maybe it's time, as it works its way through, we can send another and remind them of our position.
Our lobbyist, Gonzalez &amp; Sons, is actively involved in the lobbying effort against 649, and they appear before the committee at every opportunity.
So we're after it all.
This evening, earlier this evening, I asked that the council be copied on this copy of the article that was in Monday's LA Times speaking against this bill.
Yes.
But, yes, but thank you for coming, and hopefully some of the public heard your presentation tonight, and they can certainly write letters as well, so it --
Go to your hotel.
Great. Thank you so much. And Matt Lorimer.
Good evening, city council, people at home. You know, I want to talk about three important issues. Those issues have been around for a long time. I've been here several times talking about them. One of them, let's start with the senior center. Your city hasn't given money to the senior center like other cities. I've talked about that. Let me talk to you why it's so important. People ask me all the time, why are you so -- why are you so engaged with the senior center? Well, you know why? Because when I ran the first time for city council, I went down there and talked to those people. I didn't need assessment to see that it was overcrowded. I didn't need assessment to see that a woman in a wheelchair could barely make it through the door. We need a new senior center. And by the way, one of the most important things that I learned when I was talking to people, I talked to a gentleman, he wished not to share his name, but, you know, he goes to the senior center throughout the years, and that gentleman is one person that I'm fighting for, and why the city should build a senior center and move the process forward. That gentleman hit the beaches of Normandy, saw his friends got killed. He laid in the blood for two hours. You know, he didn't, throughout his life, he struggled, and he goes to that senior center. And it's important that we do things like that for a person like that. So I want you to remember that. I know you're moving forward, but I just want to keep reminding you that it's important that you all, all vote for giving money and moving that process forward. Number two, the firehouse. You know, that was mistaken beginning, trying to open a restaurant there, okay? That land has been for sale, and now we're in another quagmire. And what I mean by that is, we keep talking about it's for sale, but here's the point. These people want to know how much it's going to cost to fix it up. You get an appraisal, you're either going to buy it or not buy it. It's time to move this process forward. I think a better use is a police substation. Crime is up 32%. I think we should revisit it. I think you should put it for sale. I think it's time to move the ball forward. We keep talking about negotiations. How many years are we going to be talking about it? It's important. I think it's time. Every time we drive by that, every citizen sees it. They keep hearing the same thing. It's not getting done, okay? You can say you're working on it, but it's still empty. It's still there. The people obviously don't agree with the terms. I think it's time to put it on the market again. It's time to move the ball forward. You can't keep pushing the ball down 20 years from now or five years from now. What are you going to say? I know Mr. City Manager's going to say something after I leave, but he has a righteous opinion. I have a right to mine. Crime. You go along the boulevard, talk to Camrio Plumbing, you talk to people in this town, CVS. We have a problem. Crime is up. You need to start talking about, we have a problem. We need a bike patrol. We need crime stoppers. You need to give more support to the police department. And I know it's not just about writing a check. It's about talking about it, solving the problem. And I think we need to spend some time on that. I think you guys do. I think it's very important that you do that. And again, this isn't a criticism. It's a fact that these are three issues that are important to people in this community. I hear it. When you go places, people talk about it. So tonight, I just want to re-energize you to maybe go home after drinking your coffee, or think about it, and say, maybe we should visit it. Maybe it's time to look in another direction. Because you know something? If it doesn't work, it's time to look in a new direction. I hope you'll take the time and really think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lorimer. So amazingly enough, we are through our agenda other than closed sessions, I believe. So perhaps the city attorney would announce you've got one under Camrio Sanitary District and one, two under city council?
Yes, that is correct. I read the announcements earlier.
Can you just give us a brief just?
Sure. On the Camrio Sanitary District, the item is a conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, significant exposure. And then there's two items for the city council. One of those is a conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation, exposure to litigation, and the other one is the real property negotiations with the VCTC for the old courthouse.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And with that, we are recessed to a closed session or two.